No. You let me know when you're ready and I'll we'll start.
Yeah, I just have a I can usually tell when they're right now. They're still joining. So just give a few minutes.
Well, they hadn't for the distillery.
I'm gonna have to step offline then.
Don't see the mayor yet either.
No.
I just sent him a text.
Thanks.
We had a weak signal. I gotta move here.
Okay, I think we can get started.
Okay. Let's call the War of the Bradley Beach Land Use Board meeting. And please rise for the General Legion.
Where's your allegiance? United States of America. And the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you.
I'm I'm hearing some background noise from somewhere. Yeah. Okay, at this time, we kindly ask that everyone please silence all devices, move to a quiet location and keep your devices muted until you're called upon to speak. Background noises are distracting to others and they do not allow for clear recording of these proceedings. The forty-eight hour notice as required under the Public Meetings Act has been met. As notice of this virtual meeting was emailed on January thirty first, twenty twenty-two, published in the Asbury Park Press, the CoStar and the CoStar. Copies been placed on bulletin board and a copy has been filed with Borough Plan. Mayor Fox.
He's muted. Sorry, here.
Okay, Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Councilman Sexsmith.
Yeah.
Mr. Advento. Oh, he's in the waiting room. Hold on one second. Ms. Boko.
Here.
Mr. Cattelli.
Here.
Mr. Marco.
Here.
Um, Ms. I already. I don't see Kelly.
I got a text from her saying she was gonna call in on the phone, so maybe she's having trouble calling him.
Okay. Um, Chair Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Maynor.
Here.
Mr. Shuck.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Ms. Saracene.
Here.
Mr. Advento.
Here.
Okay, and also present is Mark Kitchik, Attorney of the Board, and Gerald Frida, our Board Engineer. Christine Bell will not be with us this evening.
Before we start the meeting, just for the public and people, how Bradley Beach Land Borough Land Use Board operates. Please be aware, this meeting is recorded for transcription. The public is asked not to interrupt, comment, or any way disrupt a presentation or the meeting in general. Once the land use board opens an application, the applicant or attorney will make their presentation with witnesses and professionals. Members of the board will ask questions, cross-examine each witness of the applicant as needed. Members of the audience will be able to ask questions of the applicant and the witnesses based on a testimony given. At the end of each witness's presentation, at this time, no comments, testimony, or evidence from the public will be accepted. Board may also call its own witnesses, present its own evidence with respect to any application. Once the applicant has concluded their presentation and the board opens the public comment portion of the application, the public is welcome to comment, present evidence, and testimony regarding the application. Each person must be sworn in on the oath and limited to five minutes. If desired, the applicant may cross-examine you upon your comments, based upon your comments or testimony. If more than one hearing is needed to complete the application, it will be carried to a future date. No new application will start after nine thirty unless the board and applicant agree it can be concluded in a timely manner. Otherwise, we carry the board reserves final decision. The board will adjourn at a reasonable hour and no witness testimony provided after ten P M. Let's agree to a lot of work. Thank. No correspondence, I see.
None.
I can make make a make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. You a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy. This is for the meeting minutes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Sexsmith.
Uh, I don't think I'm permitted to do these, am I? Because I was spent most of it abstain or recused.
Okay, that's fine.
That's right, abstain.
And obviously, Mr. Maynor is the same.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Marco.
Yes.
Ms. I already.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
Mr. Cattelli.
Yes.
Chair Shup. Sorry.
Yes.
Have it, have it. I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Rosenberg, I almost did it again.
Yeah. Yes.
Chair Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
We can slide a little bit.
Sorry. Um. We are going to be tabling the resolution of denial. We will have that adopted hopefully at our memorialized rather at our next. Meeting.
Discussion note to that Ocean Grace application, the use in bulk variance ZB twenty-one slash ten will not be heard tonight. It's being carried until April. So maybe it's here for the meeting for that one. It will not be heard tonight. It will be carried during April without notice.
Well, and and what's the what's the specific date, Christie?
April twenty-first.
Okay, so April twenty-first, it'll be heard. In fact, as the chairman said, with no further notice, this is in fact the notice April twenty-first for anybody who's here.
And at this point in time, we are planning on meeting in person for April twenty-first, but please double check the website. Send me an email, give me a call. I can confirm that for you, but as of right now, we're going to be in person for April.
So, Mr. Chairman, if 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 I could just address two issues, hopefully fairly quickly. One is it's come up that the board members, you know, have an interest based on the on the application of going onsite to a property and there is that authorization that's now in our packet that Christie added a couple of years ago, but the suggestion that that I'm making and I have had the opportunity to discuss this with a few of the board members is if the borough could issue an ID card to the members of the land use board so that if they do the onsite visit, they can produce that card if they're questioned, you know, what the purpose of the visit is. And I think that would tie everything together along with the authorization that's signed by the applicant. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Thank you. It's a good idea.
I agree.
But that my only comment, which I'd please like to see kind of organized, I think it's unfair to the applicant to have eight, nine people show up at different times. Maybe that there has to be some protocol as to how that's handled, so there's not a surprise and just overreach in some sort. But just.
Would make a suggestion that it's only from the sidewalk looking at the property, maybe.
But if it's internal property on a block, I ain't gonna see that. That's the problem.
So the applicant, as part of the application packet, is is giving authorization okay, to the members to do that. But yeah, I understand what the chairman's saying. It should be.
Some of the organ.
That's done respectfully and organized. The court would, you know, provide the board member with, I think, a letter of further protection identifying if if need be what their role is and why.
They do photo ID, so we don't have a bigger problem.
That, yeah, that's the goal, a photo ID, so you can have some sort of identification because yeah, you know, you have meter people running around and all kinds of crazy things going on these days, so it's would probably be best to have some sort of photo ID identifying you as being one of the board members.
Yeah, we could get a stock card made in municipal building and just get a passport picture and use a lanyard. We can give you a lanyard, a laminated lanyard, so you can put it around your neck and it looks semi-official. Okay, good.
Is there any kind of a liability thing from this we ought to think about too then?
I I it's a good question, Tim, and I asked, we're probably, yeah, I'm not sure you were, you probably left the meeting for that. We'll probably have to do. Kim, I'll just get our business administrator to take a list of land use and just put them under the policy.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
And ju- just one other housekeeping matter, and I just leave this up to the board. Our after this evening, our next meeting is going to be March twenty-fourth meeting. We're not gonna be meeting on the seventeenth, we're gonna be meeting on the twenty-fourth, and my understanding, Christie, is that we will not have any applications that evening.
As of right now, no, because Ocean Grace has requested April. Other than this application, I do not have anything pending right now. Um, so the only thing, only business that we have right now for March twenty-fourth would be the memorialization of any resolutions. Um, and possibly the one that that's being tabled this evening. We could probably take care of that next month as well.
So I'm just for the board's discussion. Maybe consider that that would be our last Zoom meeting, that we have a Zoom meeting for that meeting because it's it'll just be for the to deal with resolution adoption. Then we go live in April or in person in April.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that that make sense or?
Yeah.
That's fine.
We'll just need to make that. We'll we'll need to make that announcement at the end of the.
Yeah, I believe I had left that blank for, you know, get to our adjournment.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Hey, excuse me, it's Jerry. Can I back you up to your first point? Do I also need that type of ID or can I continue the way I've been doing it?
You use a business card, right, Jerry?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, I think. Well, I'll let Mark speak to it.
Yeah, I think that's.
Because it's not always me. It's sometimes it's another. Yeah, one of my staff that goes out there, so.
Yeah, I think that produces business card that should. That should take care.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there for housekeeping and such? Sounds good. I'd open the meeting to the application for ZB twenty-one slash sixteen bulk variances for construction of patio favors. Barbara Riola and Marlene Rapput, Block twenty-five, Lot nineteen, one-ten Ocean Park Avenue. The applicant is yours, your time right now. You are muted. You are muted.
She's looking for it. There you go.
I am muted.
Yes.
Good evening.
Got a lot of feedback there.
Yep.
You have two devices?
Yes.
Okay, you're gonna have to go in separate rooms.
Okay. I have a bad cold, so my sister didn't want to be on the same device as me.
Okay.
But we're in the same room, so she is going to another room.
Okay. iPad is Barbara.
Pardon me?
Is who's iPad that's with you? That's going to the other.
That.
She's also muted too.
She's also muted. So this is Barbara.
You're muted. Okay, here I am. I unmuted and I'm in another room now.
Thank you. All right, floor is yours.
Okay, so what we are proposing is to build a approximately eight hundred.
I'm sorry, Marlene.
Yes.
I need to swear you in first, okay?
Oh, sure.
And it's yourself and Barbara, also any any other witnesses?
No.
Okay, so if you would both raise your right hand, please, along with Mr. Frida. And repeat after me, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to this proceeding?
Yes.
I do.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, can I continue?
Yes, please, please.
Okay, so we are proposing to build approximately an eight hundred and fifty-six square foot patio in the rear of our yard. We have submitted a plot plan that shows the patio. And we understand that we are over that we are at, we would need to we're requesting three, I guess, three or four variances, a variance on each side yard and the rear yard, and also a variance for the impervious. So does everyone have a copy of the plot plan? So you can see the patio?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And that's the extent of the application, basically.
Pardon pardon me?
That's that's the extent of the application.
Correct.
I guess, Jerry, you have any comments on this?
Yes, if I could, you know.
Please.
Part part of our role is to do a site inspection and uh, when we did, we saw that the patio was actually built. It's existing. So, um, you know, that needs to be some testimony on how that all happened, how we got here. Uh, and then the board would have to decide. You know, right now, they're looking at over eighty percent for lot cover, which is, I don't have to tell you guys, that's a lot. So going forward, I know that they mentioned it was proposed, but it's actually built. It's there. So when we move on with testimony, we should discuss it as if is it's existing.
As is.
Yep.
Miss, that is correct.
That is correct.
Yeah, so has been built.
Yes.
And when was it built?
Uh, this summer.
How did we, without any variances or any permits and such, construction permits?
Okay, so I'll give you a little background on how we got here. When we built the house in two thousand seventeen, we had asked the builder to he had to submit one of the requirements of our resolution back in two thousand seventeen for the building of the home was that we install a dry well. So what we had done, we had, we knew that we would eventually want to do some kind of paver patio in the back because loose stones are not safe and they're honestly, we're, you know, getting elderly and they're a tripping hazard. So we knew that eventually we would want to build some kind of a patio. So what we asked him to do was to put drainage down the west side of our backyard and have it go into the dry well. And so we never saw a dry well plan. It went right from the builder to the town. So we actually thought that we were going to be complying with any runoff because we, if you can look at the plot plan, we pitched all of, we had the the paver who did the work pitch it to the west side where we thought there was drainage. So we came to the town to see. You know, when we started looking for our dry well plan, we didn't have one, so we went to the town and we were gonna get a copy and we saw Christie and we got a copy from Kentryana. And there was no drainage from the back to the front, so we called the builder. And he did not recall ever doing that work. But he did recall that we talked about it, but he just never did it. So we never saw the dry well plan, thought it was in place, had the patio pitched to that west side, thinking that there was pipe and thought it was going into the dry well.
Here, here we are, it's built. We're talking about dry well, but we're talking also if a plant had been submitted with that area of eighty-two percent impervious coverage and the patio in place. I'm just wondering how that would have been received from the town, so it sounds like I'm sure, did anybody see that? With the patio in the patio and the impervious coverage spelled out?
No.
Okay, so here we are, we have we have a patio in position that's been built. We have eighty-three percent impervious coverage, approximately eighty-two. The house itself is that's fifty-nine point nine, dwelling is now fifty-nine point nine percent impervious and sixty percent is allowed. Anybody else on the board have any comments or questions, one direct to the applicant?
I I just have a clarifying question. So does the property have a dry well right now or no?
It does. It has.
It does.
Yes, it was part of our resolution in two thousand nineteen that we install a dry well, so we had that done. And what we had thought that the builder did was we thought that he drained from the back down the side into that dry well. And he did not.
So if I can help the board a little bit, maybe. Um, one of the problems is even if you had the drainage system in place that you say you thought you had, that does not still give you the right to to go over the impervious coverage. That's, you know, a definite no-no. I don't know if you got bad advice from a contractor or whatever. But when you were in to build your house, you guys elected to use up all of your building coverage and impervious coverage the way you did with the two family, with the two family house with the big wide driveway. That used up all, everything you're allotted, so your whole patio is illegal and needs a variance for the whole patio. That's where we stand.
What we thought we were doing was mitigating that water runoff the way we did for the home. Like our home has six inch gutters, six inch wide gutters around the entire perimeter of the home that feed into that dry well. So even though you're saying that, yes, it's impervious, there's no water actually touching the ground from our home.
But that's not the point. The point is your home was built and you got your sixty percent coverage with what you had without the patio. And all that was flushed out during the testimony, initial testimony on your first try where we asked you to increase the gutter size. We asked you to put the dry well in. They were all conditions of approval that were worked through during that meeting. Now, if you want to put the patio in, you guys should have come in with your plans and said, this is what we would like to do. Just like you started speaking in the beginning, how you're proposing a patio. But you didn't. You guys just built the patio. And here we are, we have to make a decision going forward.
Right, and in hindsight, yes, that's what we should have done.
Unfortunately, we are here with existing patio. And was positioned as a proposed addition, but it's not. The board uh, just does doesn't bode well when the board gets applications that do not they're not positioned or positive as to what really is. And I know what you're asking for. It just, this is just my opinion. But I would bet a dollar, you would not get eighty-three percent or eighty-two percent impervious coverage any way, shape, or form. Anytime. So that said, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, that will come up to a vote. Um, I think it's pretty straightforward what's here. I I still. Why are we here now? What what why are we here in February of two thousand twenty-two asking for permission or forgiveness? And when permission was never granted, why are we here now? What precipitated us being here tonight?
Can the applicant address that? Was it was a? What what triggered the?
We got a, we filled out a permit and we got a denial, so we went through the process and got a plot plan and you know, even if it's after the fact, we still you know, that that's how we got here. I mean, we filled out a permit, got a denial, and we went through this process and it took quite a few months to you know, do all this. So I mean, it is February, but.
Was the permit, was the permit applied for after the installation of the patio?
Uh, yes.
When did you get your denial?
In, uh.
August of last year, one that was in the packet?
I'm sorry, what?
Is this the August of twenty-one that was in the packet?
Correct.
So in August of twenty-one, you applied for this through resowing permit and it got denied?
Correct.
And then you built it after that denial?
No, we were in the process of building it and realized that we should have done this, filled out the permit and got denied. And now we're through, we're coming through the process.
Well, didn't didn't you say that the patio was built last summer?
It was built in July.
Well, and if you applied and when when did you make the the application for the permit?
August.
Okay.
So could you also just walk me through the build? Because it looks to me, if I'm calculating this properly, you already had requested six variances on the bill that you did.
Um, okay, I I think there's four. I think there's one for each side yard and then the.
No, in your, in your initial build, when you built the house itself, you came.
Two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. I thought it was sixteen, but thank you for clarifying two thousand seventeen. So if I'm correct in reading that, there were six variances that you needed out of approximately how many we were, you requested, out of, I think, eight.
Um.
It was more than that. I was like, second, I think it was eight out of nine, but your point's well taken.
Yeah, I think it was eight variants.
Um, okay, I'm going through the resolution because I think.
Yes, there was, uh, one was removed and they were left with eight.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's so, that's correct.
I just say, again, I mean, I think you understand the point is that even though your build out was within the sixty percent or just under at fifty-nine point nine, I think toeing the line and asking for all those variances and then going ahead and building this patio just speaks volumes to, I think, the respect for the town and for the community and for your overall. You know, how you view your property and your stance.
I can tell you, we we did not mean to be disrespectful. We did not. I can tell you, we, we did not mean to be disrespectful, we did not, we actually thought that we had put in drainage. And that we were addressing the runoff and we thought that's what was important. Um, so, you know, we do apologize for that, but it wasn't meant to be disrespectful to the town.
So, Mr. Chairman, one of the, one of the obligations of an applicant is to. Justify the request. Uh, pursuant to municipal land use law as to justify the request for the relief being granted. So at the, at the very least, I think we have to hear testimony from the applicant, you know, what's the justification for, for, for var- variance? Relief pursuant to municipal land use law.
That's fair, get on record.
Uh, our justif.
I have a question of our engineer. Uh, Jerry?
Yeah.
Was there ever a calculation submitted on the uh runoff? Or no?
No.
All right, does anyone know the size of that dry well?
I'd have to go back and look, we took notes on it and we inspected it before it was backfilled. That was part of the initial application.
Right.
And, you know, what we would do on the board level there is. Be, because they were very close to building coverage. And it's a small lot, we always try to make them capture the roof runoff to at least address some of the water. Which is what we did here. I'm pretty sure the uh, the wet well is in the driveway in the front of the house. And it was supposed to take the leaders from the gutter from the roof, so that whole building goes into the wet well. But that's all, nothing else goes into a wet well. And we don't have any record. As the applicant had mentioned of any pipe carrying up the west side. Uh, for future considerations, we don't have any information on that either, so um. You know, the problem is somehow the cart got put before the horse. Don't, don't know how, don't know if that's important at this point. Uh, but what's important is. That patio is just, it, it's just too much construction on a, on the lot. And the board has to make a decision.
The, the only thing that we're really discussing is the patio and it's taking up ninety percent of the backyard.
Well, once again, you know, simply said, you're right about that, but. You know, um, you know, the applicant mentioned that was a bit of a hardship, you know, walking on stone and that kind of thing and, and she's not wrong.
It is grass.
Um, but yeah, I mean, it could get pulled up, we could put grass in, just like everyone else's backyard.
I, I'd like to get, and Jerry, I'd like to get back to the applicant here, what's the, what's the justification concerning municipal land use law? As for the granting of the variances?
Mark, I'm not sure, they don't have any professionals here, so I don't know how you're gonna get that answer.
Okay, so here's how we're gonna get it, so um. So Marlene, if I can call you Marlene.
Sure.
You're, you're, you're looking for a, a, a C variance. Um, and pursuant to municipal land use law. That, well, and, and a C variance is, is also called the bulk variance, so. Um, a C one authorizes the grant of bulk variance is justified only upon the finding of a hardship. arising out of the exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape or exceptional topographic. Conditions of a specific piece of property. Subsection C two allows the grant of a variance where the purposes of the act would be advanced by deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements. And that the benefits would outweigh any detriment to the public good. So that's the standard that would apply here, so.
I would tell you that.
I'm, I'm, uh, what's your hardship? Are you?
Our hardship is that it was just difficult for us to, to walk on those patio, uh, on those. Stones and so um, when we had planned to put furniture back there, we thought we would just build the patio. We had always planned, um, you know, thinking that we had the drainage, you know, in place. Um, I know I'm beating a dead horse with this, but I thought that the, we thought the issue was. The runoff and the water and we thought that we were accommodating that. Um, if that's not the issue, then we, we clearly didn't realize that. We thought that the issue was the runoff of water.
If, if I could, the runoff of the water is, is the bulk of the issue. And you can put in whatever collection system of that water you propose. But this board does not have to grant you any approval for that much lot coverage. That doesn't give you the opportunity. To build this patio, also ignoring the side yard setbacks and the rear yard setback. Um, now this is carrying four variances after you had been in here five, six years ago. And got variances to build what you already have, so it, if you, if you see the board's point, it's like, well. You know, where's this all gonna end? What's coming next? Um, it, it just makes, it doesn't follow. Uh, standard practice in any way.
Totally understand.
I, I feel badly having to say that, maybe you got some bad advice, bad advice along the way. Um, but this is an issue that has to be addressed by the board. And if I could lay out an option or two, would I, can we do that?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
The patio that's in place now, it is made of an impervious material, stone pavers?
Yes.
Um, yes, it is, but we did not um, do any, we didn't fill any of the cracks, we didn't. Um, any of the joints um, with any of that impervious material, so that.
Right, so.
Already aggregate amount, I'm trying, what I'm getting at is would a, would a true impervious paper, even though not covered at this time by our code. If she had done that and followed the proper setbacks, that would have got her out of lot coverage issue, right? If was a true.
No, no, because she was up right up against it to begin with.
Okay.
And you don't get a hundred percent waiver from it. Maybe in certain instances, industrial, you know, out, out in the real world, maybe they give you a twenty-five percent or fifty percent. But, you know, this is just. It's way too much for the property.
Agreed.
I agree with that, it's, yeah, free, I totally agree with it, it's just.
It's further compounded by, you know, we, we have no testimony as to support. Why the board should grant the variance being requested.
Right, right, so I, I was gonna try to help a little bit here if I could. You know, recognizing that they don't have a professional to speak on their behalf. Um, and, and, and I'm just bringing this up for the board to consider. You know, um. Do you consider, uh, you know, having the uh side yard setbacks met and have it brought in five feet on each side? Uh, do you consider making it a twelve foot wide patio instead of nineteen? Take seven feet off the back. Uh, something of that nature that they can have a, a small air, a smaller area. Maybe even less than what I'm saying, you might be more comfortable with ten foot. Um, if they come five feet off each property line, that leaves them with twenty-five feet, which is pretty wide. And if you go where the grill is and go back ten feet. Um, that would give you at least something to put a table, sit down, have the grill, you have your shower, all that stuff is there. You're still gonna be over on your impervious coverage, but at least it's manageable and not. Uh, at the numbers that it is now. So those are just things I want to throw out for consideration on behalf of the applicant. If I could.
Charlie, would it, would a true impervious paper at that point make a big difference or no?
No.
No.
Jerry, I, I see where you're going, but no.
Jerry, I, I did some calculations with the numbers showing what they have. And basically, if you go at sixty-two and a half percent cover, impervious coverage. Number just kind of works out, like you get ten by ten.
Yeah, that's probably about right.
And if you have a sixty-five percent at the upper end of it, you can get me a fourteen by fourteen. Now, how that's all arranged, I'll be honest, frankly, I'm a little irritated, the fact this is presented as. Would, as something to be built, and, but here we are, having it built, and I know I should just probably prejudice a bit. But I, this irritates me to know.
So. Can I, I agree with that statement.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Brought to us, we want to do it and then Barry tells us that it's already been done.
So let me make a suggestion, would the applicant agree to? Uh, come back. Redo a plan with a much smaller patio. And um, rip, take the patio that you have out. Uh, and come back with a plan to the board and we'll take a look at it and then it could be looked at then, but. It's gonna have to be much, much more than what you're showing. Yeah, I heard you say, maybe twelve by twelve or something like that.
Can we set a percentage?
If we adhere to the five foot setback on all sides. Then that would basically give us our. Ten by ten or twelve by twelve. I mean, the backyard is thirty-five by thirty-five.
If, if you get five by five on the two sides in the back, your patio would be nineteen by twenty-five. That's big, all by itself. And, and at that nineteen by twenty-five. You would have a lot coverage of seventy-six point six percent. And that's a big ask, since we've already been through in recent years, the initial construction.
So the, the, the installation of a dry well actually in the back. If we did a dry well and did drainage. And kept the patio a little bigger, would that be sufficient to capture the runoff and um?
In this case, in this case, I don't, wouldn't recommend that to the board because the lot is narrow. And there's really not a lot of room to move the water around, um, you just don't have a lot of room back there, it's small. And, you know, if you were to put in a twelve by twelve.
Even if we came at five feet.
If I've reached, really.
Mr. Frieda, Mr. Frieda, I think your suggestion is well taken, because otherwise it's just gonna be a vote and we're gonna be done.
Yeah, and you don't want that.
And the applicant doesn't understand something by not having representation, and if she does get turned down. She has to come back with a substantially different application, and I cannot even begin to define what that would be.
Right, and, and you know, if the applicant wanted to hire a professional. And have that person call my office, I could maybe give them a little insight, I'd be happy to do that if it would help. Uh, but if this were to go to a vote, I don't know where it would go and it would probably mean no patio at all. So.
Would the board please weigh in on what percentage of impervious coverage may consider maximum? Sixty-two percent, sixty-three?
So, Mr. Chairman, ju-just before we do that. There's been testimony, the public has the right to ask questions.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not going to the uh public portion of opinion. The, the public does have the right to ask questions of the applicant, so.
Let's do that then first before we hold.
Thank you.
Thanks.
May I ask another question?
Please.
Um, Mr. Frieda, could you just go back when you were saying coming in five feet on both sides? And then what was the number coming in off the back?
Well, um, it.
Your proposal?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, okay.
Yeah, if you come ten feet, you know, you're, now you're down, at least you're in a seventy percent range.
That, that was my next question, so that brings you to like, in the mid seventies, right?
Yep.
I've got a question for you too, Jerry. The material that we use on the beach, the runners.
Yes.
Could, could that potentially be used as a patio where it would be? Allow water to be recharged, give stability over top of the, the stones. Um, and whether that's considered coverage or not, it's like putting a blanket out on your backyard.
You know, I, I hear what you're saying, I don't have an answer for that, I'd have to research that, I don't know the answer to that.
Because I mean, the ones that we have on the beach are very stable. Um, that's why they put them in there, and I'm sure they make them in, in different sizes, not just, you know. Long and skinny.
Well, a- and then the other issue you have there is, they're looking for more of a rectangle type of piece. Uh, those things get staked down into the ground and, you know, they're not real level. Uh, for your patio and your backyard, you probably wouldn't want that type of surface, because it's somewhat irregular. Um, but. Yep, no, I, 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 it's a good idea.
Any questions on the board before we open this, open questions from the public regarding the applicant and their testimony? Seeing none. I would like to open this portion of the application for questions directed to the applicant as to testimony given. See Mr. Cohen as his hand up?
Uh, Thomas J. Cohen, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Thomas J. Cohen, six twelve third Avenue. I, I just, I have a question for the applicant, but I also have a clarification for Mr. Kittrick. Mr. Kittrick, is this a C one or C two variance request under the bulk variance?
That's up to the applicant.
Okay, okay.
They, that's, the burden is on, on them to make that request.
Yes, sir, I, I understand that, I, 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 I had a question about the denied permit in August of twenty twenty-one. Um, Mr. Rashput, i- is it, is it a, uh, that was a, a zoning permit denial that you received at that date?
Yes.
Okay, great, ha- have you ever, have you read the ordinances for the Borough Bradley Beach?
Not lately.
Okay, um, uh, uh, have you considered a, a deck on grade? Which would not impact uh impervious coverage if it was up to four percent of the lot size?
We didn't consider a deck because our back door is at ground.
Well, this would be a deck on grade, as per the ordinance, it allows for a deck on grade, but you didn't consider that?
We, yeah, we didn't actually think about that, that's, we didn't know. Yeah, we didn't know that.
Yeah, no further questions, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public to the applicant? Seeing none. Um.
I, if I could, I do want to make a comment about the Mobi mat suggestion. Um, at the end of the day, Mobi mats are made of plastic and if we have a community of backyard school of Mobi mats. Um, with the weather turning cold or hot, there's possibility for leaching of that plastic. Um, so I just would like the applicant and board to keep that in mind when, when we're talking about that, those particular structures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I agree with that comment, and that was part of the reason why I said I would have to do research on that before I could comment. But she's right.
Um. Marlene, I'm sorry, your last name's Ro- Ro- Rashput?
It's Rashput, yes.
Have, is, have you summed up your testimony and have you decided which way you want to go on this? Do you, as, take Mr. Frieda's? Opinion or any advice?
Yes.
You, you understand what he's saying, I want to be clear about this.
I think, I would say that um, we would have to submit another plan. That's smaller than what we have today.
Like, I think the key part is professional guidance to get you there.
Um, would that professional guidance be the person who actually drew the plot plan for us? Are we talking about a technical person? Are we talking about an attorney?
Somebody who knows, somebody who knows the zoning rules and will help. And will know how to come into a solution that satisfies the board's needs, the town's needs. And hopefully yours.
Uh, if, if I could add to that, um, you know, the, uh, Mr. Kittrick had mentioned earlier on about. You know, planning testimony, because you need a C one, C two variance. Uh, so, you know, an engineer with a planning license or a planner. Uh, would be helpful. for you for the next, uh, meeting. Uh, and, and, and really a, a better consideration of a more appropriate sized patio. Uh, and, and I will throw this in that, uh, Mr. Cohen, uh, offered a, a suggestion of a on grade wood deck, which our ordinance, uh, favors for drainage because of the gap between the boards. And if it's built appropriately, the water hits the, hits the deck, the wood deck or the tracks or whatever you would use, and it goes down into the ground underneath. So as long as the ground underneath is pervious, there are some abilities to build that instead of maybe a patio. So maybe something you might want to consider, but those are things you should talk to your engineer and planner about before you come back.
Okay.
And if they would like to reach out to me in the process, they're welcome to.
I, I think, I think that, that advice is good. I would add to that, that whatever professional advice you get and you come back to this meeting, it'd be helpful if that professional was at the meeting. Because not only do you have to demonstrate to the board, hey, this is my plan and, but, uh, and this is my need, but this is my justification for the plan. And these are the reasons why the board should grant the variances that, you know, that, that, that's what's needed here. Okay?
Okay.
Based on that, based on that, how, how much time you think you may need or how much time do we give to get this resolved? Because you can't just sit there, um, aside on a mine. What's, what's sort of timeframe you're looking at? Get this done. And maybe Mr. Frieder can chime in a little bit on that, how much time?
April meeting?
April.
We can, we can carry it to April, um, the April twenty-first meeting. And if they don't have everything resolved between speaking with Jerry, their professional, as long as they let us know, we would need the plan, any revised plans at least ten days prior to the hearing date. They have to be on file, um, for public viewing. Um, the other thing is, um, is this going to affect their notice at all if they reduce the amount of variances that they're requesting or?
Well, no, but what would, uh, affect the notices, we'd be going in person in April, so they would have to renotice.
Okay.
Uh, I, I have a question. What's, uh, so we, uh, we table this for now. Will they revise their plan? What happens with the existing patio in the interim?
I got fairness stays there until this gets resolved. Without, because on one way or the other has to go. It's gonna go one way or another.
Well, did, so I, I understand that concern. I would just offer, since I'm the, I'm the board attorney. Um, not, I, I don't represent any other entity. We are not an enforcement agency, this board. We do not. That's not what we do. And I'll leave it at that.
And the other, the other issue is it may be possible for them to remove, remove half of it or three quarters of it or whatever and leave part of what's there. I don't know if that's the case. They have to come back to us with the plan. So, I mean, they're certainly gonna have to take up something. Just don't know how much.
Okay, so we're having- I, I guess the gist of my question is what happens if they don't come back to us with a plan?
Uh, I guess code enforcement could cite the, uh, uh, a violation and a fine.
They could be issued a violation, given time to abate. And if they didn't abate it, then it's, then notice a violation would turn into a summons. And if they shouldn't have moved.
Yeah, Paul, Paul's one of our code guys, so we'll be well aware of this. Is there, is there a mechanism in place to flag this so that does not get lost in the future that code enforcement will follow up?
Well, as, as it exists here and now, it's illegal. So violation, notice of violation, warning letter can be issued now, moving forward. If that's issued, then it's on the timelines. You can apply for a time extension and that can just carry until it's resolved.
Just so it's, so it's flagged in the system so it doesn't get lost. Yes, that's probably the smartest thing we can do.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Mr. Rashput, you understand what, where, where we're going with this. Right, so you're asking for continuation. You'll speak with professionals, get this redesigned somewhere to where you've heard us talk tonight about coverage. It's not about the dry well, it's about coverage. And come back with a plan that works. You think it was working, that worked for you, and we take it up again.
Okay.
And just so we, so just so we're clear, this'll, this would be carried to our April twenty-first meeting. You are going to have to renotice for that April twenty-first meeting because we will be in person.
Okay.
But stating the April twenty-first meeting is, is, is a placeholder for you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, are we gonna open it to the public for comments?
Do we have to as we're continuing it?
Yeah, I, I would, I would recommend that we take public comment.
Okay.
Since, at the next meeting, since it's going to be a different application.
I have some comment now that it may be helpful, Mr. Kitterick.
I'll leave that up to the chairman.
I'm not sure how it's gonna help since it's being continued. We've got a different, a totally different application, Mr. Cohen. So unless you're some point of order you're trying to make, I really don't see as far as application goes.
It's ordinance related, sir, that they may not have to come back. If they switch to a deck on grade of fourteen by twelve, that would be a hundred and seventy-five square feet. That would meet the four percent requirement of the ordinance. They wouldn't even have to come back if that was their plan. So they're gonna-
Okay, well, they're gonna speak to professionals and, uh, that, that was mentioned earlier. And so.
Fair comment, Mr. Cohen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So this is being tabled, carried to the April meeting?
Yeah, so if you have a, perhaps-
A motion to-
Yeah, carry to April twenty-first with notice.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Maynard?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Going to abstain due to the fact that I may have to take enforcement on this.
Okay. Um, Ms. Iorrdi?
Yes.
Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Councilman Sexsmith?
Yes.
Mr. Maynard?
Yes.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Patelley?
Yes.
And Chair Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
So you in April?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a mo- motion for German?
Just if, uh, just we're gonna make, Chrissy, could you make the announcement about the next meeting?
Okay, can I, can I ask a, a, a housekeeping question just, uh, real fast? So the, uh, this last applicant, they need to renotice because we're going live.
Yes.
And I believe I heard at the beginning of the meeting that, uh, the property on Ocean Avenue, I forget the name we're going under, doesn't have to renotice, but wouldn't they also have to since we're going live?
Motion.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I'll advise on Mr. Running.
Right.
Cause there's, there's been multiple notices on that property, so, um, he probably should renotice anyway.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, so our next scheduled meeting will be our regular meeting on Thursday, March twenty-fourth at six thirty PM. That will take place via Zoom. Um, that will, I, I'm hoping, um, we're gonna get that other resolution that was tabled this evening straightened out and we'll take care of that one. Um, please check the website for any updates regarding the, um, meeting IDs and passwords they change with each Zoom. And there's no further business before this board this evening, so I have a, a motion to adjourn.
Second, second, yes.
All in favor? Hi. Hey, thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Good everyone.
Safe, be healthy.
Good night.
Good night.
Hi.